Good Tuesday evening, everyone. The November 9th, 2021 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. Board Member Campbell, would you please read our commitment statement?
I will. Our commitment statement reads, "We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success."
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board's secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Don Browning, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Throer, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. We will now ask Ms. Gay Street, Principal of Spar Elementary School, to please come forward with her amazing student and provide us with the inspiration and the pledge.
Good evening, Chair Throer, Vice Chair King, Board Members, Mr. Powers, Mrs. Martinez Lopez, and Dr. Gullett. It is an honor and privilege to be here tonight. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm here with an inspiration, Mary Ann Intravia. She's an inspiration not only to our students, but to our staff and to the Marion County School System. So, Mary Ann is a student. She's a fifth grade student at Spar Elementary. She's a safety patrol. She's an honor roll student. She is also a person who has earned a perfect score on her FSA math last year. Not only did she earn that, she helped other students, and she did this in a pandemic.
Wow.
Currently, she's in the Cub Scout 563 that meets at the Spar Methodist Church. And so, she recently participated in a cleanup project at Indian Lake National Forest. And so, they cleaned up around the lake, and then they enjoyed nature. Currently, she is working on earning her Arrow of Light, and she will probably do that by the spring. May I introduce to you my inspiration, Mary Ann Intravia.
Thank you. You can probably put the microphone down a little bit. There you go.
Please stand for the pledge.
Yes, ma'am.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary Ann, just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the whole board for really doing your best and doing such a great job. I mean, to get a perfect score on a big math test like that is really an accomplishment.
Thank you for having me today.
Well, it's our pleasure to have you, and we see your mom back there, and sure, she's really proud of you too, and your principal, Ms. Street. Is there anyone that you want to thank?
Thank my, um, the teachers I had. Thank all the teachers I had throughout my, um, school years. And I do thank my Ms. Street and my mom, Ms. Intravia, and thank you for having me today.
Absolutely. Congratulations. Thank you for everything you do.
Impressive.
It sure is. It sure is. We have such great kids. Thank you, Ms. Street. Always a pleasure to see you too.
Mary Ann, if I may tell you, 563 was my pack 40 years ago. So, uh, I'm an alumnus too, so you'll go far in life, I'm sure.
That's right. She's going to be an architect, maybe, or an attorney. I already tried to talk her into being a teacher.
Awesome.
Elon Musk.
Thank you.
Einstein.
Take good care of you guys. Be safe.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
All right. It's always a great way to kick off the night.
It is. Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, and I'm certain she will be successful whatever is chosen. I recommend approval of the agenda for the November 8th, I'm sorry, November 9th, 2021 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting with the exception of item C 7.1 that has been pulled and placed under discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings, seconded by Vice Chair King. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 24th, 2021 school board meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 7th, 2021 special board meeting, public hearing for final millages and budget?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair King.
Second.
Seconded by, was that you, Board Member Browning? Okay, seconded by Board Member Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 9th, 2021 administrative briefing and work session?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 14th, 2021 school board meeting?
So move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Campbell. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 23rd, 2021 administrative briefing and work session?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to persons requesting to address the board, I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight. Good evening, Attorney Powers.
Good evening, Chair Throer. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board's secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless a statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with students' discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families is strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez Lopez, how many community members do we have tonight?
We have two this evening. Ms. Dolores Hill?
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome, Ms. Hill. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening to everybody, and thank you for having me here. I would like to thank the school board for this opportunity to speak. My name is Dolores Annie Hill, H.I.L.L., 790 Southwest 135 Terrace. My granddaughter goes, and I am the legal caregiver ever she goes. She is an 11th grader at Donellen High School. Go Tigers! And, um, the issue I have is we, Houston, we have a problem. There is a problem with the bus transportation, and I understand with COVID, I understand the issues, I understand we have a certain amount of budgeting to do, but I am asking on behalf of the children that need to make it to school. My daughter, she'll stand out there at the bus stop and these, and stand for an hour and a half. Now, we do get calls in the morning, in the morning, and we'll get calls in the evening, maybe if we get good cell service, but the problem is, excuse me, the problem is, is that we're not giving incentives to our employees, our bus drivers. Our bus drivers, I feel that the money that we have needs to be cut up at the table, just like when you pay your bills and do what's best for the children. We've already had a death, and I would like to say at this time, my heart and love and sympathy goes out to the family of the little boy that died trying to go to school. This is unacceptable. We can't leave our children out in the elements. We can't leave them standing there out for an hour and a half for dogs to attack them and predators to spy on them. People know that the, you know, children are standing out there. It's rumored everywhere, they're being stalked. This is just, it's not us. We're a family. Marion County, I researched it before we moved here, and I am grateful that I have all of you to help. I am grateful we moved here. We need more incentives for bus drivers. We need either sign-on bonuses or more money or versatile employees, just put it back into the school system, but why would somebody want to come and drive one of our school buses? Why? Because they can go over to FedEx and get paid more. And it's sad because our children will be taking y'all's jobs one of these days. They're going to be running Marion. This is a big city. We have, what, 350? Last I checked, it's 350, maybe 380. You all are the smart people up here. We need your help, and I'm asking you, not for my child, not for Haley Jade Hicks, 11th grader at Donellen High School, I'm asking, please, for all the kids. Let's put this money to work to good use. The schools need more money put into, ask for funding. Ask for, ask for it. Go to a higher power. We got two of the greatest men in the world living right here in the great sunshine, excuse me, Sunshine State, DeSantis and Donald Trump. We are a great state. This is a great, Marion County's big, huge, and we got it going on. Let's just do a little more, if we can just pull a little more in for our children, for the busing transportation. It's dangerous to me for a bus driver, and my view, for a bus driver to do one route, and she's picking up the junior high children, and she unloads those children, and then the high school kids are waiting, they're waiting for their ride. Excuse me, but the last time I checked, I paid taxes, and, um, and this area, if I could address it, and nothing personal, but I think, well, without looking, I just paid it. There's five areas that we pay into the school district, and I was just, we can do better than this. This is ridiculous. Our kids mean more, and it's just not mine, it's everybody's. You see them little children standing alongside the road, and here comes somebody, you know, staring them down, and the girls will turn to the woods. They're afraid. We need some help. I don't know how you can do it. You all are the smart people, not me. I just, I come to ask you, please, please, address this matter and see that we, as a team, as a family, can put our heads together and work harder. I'm not talking about a bake sale. I'm talking about working harder, working harder for our children. And I thank you all for listening to me tonight. I wish you all a very good evening. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Really appreciate you coming out tonight.
Mm-hmm. Thank you for having me. It's been a pleasure.
You do have my card, right?
Yes, ma'am. I got it right here. I have several cards. Thank you all.
Awesome. Wonderful. Thank you.
Mr. Robert Schmidt?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Board Members. My name is Robert Schmidt, 11 SCHMIDT, 11488 Southwest 82nd Court Road, Ocala, Florida. Just to take just a moment, I do agree that probably bus drivers are probably some of the most underappreciated, um, you know, members of our school system, and I must admit that I remember the days when I was taking the bus, and, um, they faced a lot of challenges back then, and my guess is those challenges have done nothing more than amplify themselves in today's environment. So anyhow, so my comments tonight are regarding COVID, and I'm just going to go ahead and read through them so I don't stumble through my speech, okay? So, our, basically, we've all become aware of the recent availability of the COVID vaccine to our youth, okay? I think that there's sufficient medical science for parents to be the ultimate decision-makers. All one has to do is look at the real figures to determine the actual risk to youth under the age of 18, and in my opinion, Americans have been hoodwinked regarding the efficacy, durability, and the risks associated with the shots. Too many parents will not, will not be, this will not be an issue to many parents, and to others, this is going to be a big, significant issue, okay? And may take, and want to take a different action on vaccines, okay? My question is, what is the school board doing and the adminis, school administration doing to ensure parents and the students and doctors maintain the sole authority for what happens and their decisions? What will be done to assure parents they have the primacy in the medical decisions for their students? Does the school board and school administration take the passive approach to vaccine administration? Or is there going to, where they consider attendance to be, um, attendance to being consent? Or will the school board take more of a forward-leaning, active, uh, action to consent, okay? Is there any risk that a student one day will walk home vaccinated even though the parents and that student have not made that decision? Is there going to come the opportunity where that student comes home and says, mommy, daddy, guess what happened to me today? I got vaccinated. And then these parents are there in horror, sitting there looking down the end of their, what happened today? What went wrong, okay? Has the school board thought through, and my guess is that you probably have given this some consideration, this is not something that you're being caught flat-footed on, okay? So my comments are probably nothing more than amplifications of things that you've already thought about so far, okay? So, um, have you thought through how these vaccines will be rolled out? What is going to be the process and procedures for keeping those individuals that make that decision private or decide not to do it? What is going to be the privacy that's involved with that so that we don't involve, we don't get to this two-tiered system within our school system? That's what we're trying to avoid here, okay? I think we can see how all this can be very divisive, and we don't want that to be in our school system. That's the last thing we need in our school system. Will the school board sanction vaccination campaigns within the school system? Those are all good questions that parents are going to want to know. Those are things that I think of, and I'm certainly, I'm certain that I'm not the only one thinking about these things as we start to approach these issues. I realize that the school board and the school administration comes at, comes at these issues from different vectors, okay? Everybody's got a different approach to the same issue, and so I want to make sure that there's, um, that there is a assurance to parents that regardless of what their decision is, that that decision is theirs and that it is going to be private and that it doesn't become a political or any other kind of football, okay? That's what we're, that's what we're after here. So, in closing, um, I can honestly think of no issue that will probably divide our student body more than parents being caught flat-footed with the, with these vaccination issues, okay? And we want to keep that out of the school system, and so this is nothing more than to get you thinking that, get you thinking along those lines of what potentially we're going to see. We've seen it in other parts of the country, not suggesting that it's going to happen here, but it could happen, but let's be proactive and let's avoid those issues altogether, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further? Okay. Thank you. Didn't know if we had any last minute. May I have a motion to adopt the 2021-2022 Student Progression Plan?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair King. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The 2021-2022 Student Progression Plan will reflect the changes in legislation in order to be in compliance with Florida Statute 1008.25 and to clarify language concerning student progression in Marion County.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the 2021-2022 Student Progression Plan? Seeing none? Board, is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C 7.1 through C 20.1 with the exception of item C 7.1 that has been pulled and placed under discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair King, seconded by Board Member Campbell. All those in favor, say aye.
I'd like to have a discussion, Madam Chair.
We're getting to that. This is just to approve the motion, to pull it.
Oh, to pull, to pull one?
We will be discussing.
Yes. Fine. Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Um, Board Member Campbell, I believe you pulled this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, I, as we look at the tentative board preparation calendar there, and this was item C 7.1, there were a couple of notes that I made on it and was curious to know if we wanted to make some adjustments. So, the first thing is indicated in our schedule that February 2nd through the 4th are FSBA days in the legislature, and currently, we have in this schedule a work session on February 3rd, because last year, I know the Capitol was not open for visitation, but it will be this year. So, with this being my first year that the Capitol is open, I didn't know when traditionally our school board goes to Tallahassee, if we go during FSBA days or if we go at a different time. And so, if we do go during FSBA days, I would like to see if we could potentially move the agenda items on the February 3rd date to another date and potentially cancel that February 3rd work session so that we could go up over FSBA days. But again, that's, I'm not certain when we typically go up as a board, but I know that's something that I think we would like to do again.
Yes, ma'am. Board?
In the past, we, we went up.
Yeah, we usually do go up. I don't know when those date.
It's the 2nd through the 4th.
It's like a Tuesday, Wednesday, or something like that? That's what I remember.
It is the 2nd through the 4th that we're scheduled to go, and this has happened before. I'm fine with that. I would just want to ask Dr. Gullett to review the items for that work session, and then please get back with the, with the chair about which items should be moved where based on any deadlines that may be embedded in those items and, and things of that nature, but.
And I did have one other thing in the, in the calendar as well, but that would be great if we could figure out the February 3rd thing so potentially we could all be in Tallahassee as much as possible.
Are we all good with that?
Yes.
I am. You're good? Okay.
Um, and the only other thing in the schedule that I noted was in June, actually, because of the way the month of June falls with the 1st happening at a strange time, and so our second, our, our board meeting and work session actually happened a day apart on the week of June 14th, with June, June 14th school board meeting, June 16th work session. So I didn't know if we wanted to move that June 16th work session to the 23rd, so it does put us on that off schedule. So we have a work session one week, a board meeting the next week, and, and vice versa. That was, that's the only one that I saw like that, and it just happens to fall where we have a board meeting and a work session within a day of each other.
You know, it also comes to question is, is when is the FSBA in summer?
June 8th through the 10th.
Right. So it's the week before.
10th? Okay.
Right.
My calendar must be incorrect because I actually showed that we had work sessions on the 9th and 23rd.
Well, this is the schedule that we're going to be approving tonight, so that's why I pulled it for discussion, because we haven't, I don't know that we've actually set the full schedule for the 2022 year. So just, if we were wanting to potentially move the June 16th work session to the 23rd, then that would again put us on that off schedule and keep us at FSBA the week before, and then have a board meeting on the 14th and a work session on the 23rd, and then a board meeting again on the 28th.
Makes sense.
I don't have a problem with that in, in theory. I am looking at the different items, and just something that I'm reflecting on is that that is getting us towards the end of the fiscal year, so I want to make sure that whatever presentations and again, you know, statutory deadlines and requirements that we're meeting those and not leaving things till the last minute and having anything be rushed. So that would be my only thing. Other than that, I'm fine.
The only thing on the, the calendar right now is just school planning update on the 16th is what's, so Elena does a pretty good job of showing us what we need to have when, and so the only thing on that particular work session date is just school planning update, but I don't know if that is a timeframe.
I'm comfortable leaving it that week because also it's the end of the month, and our employees start taking vacation time, and it's the 4th, you know?
Yeah.
And with the fiscal year, there, I'm comfortable if we just leave it alone as it's presented to us, just for those couple reasons, you know? I don't know.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Are we, we're able to adjust this along the way, too? If we do set, if we do adjust it as Ms. Campbell is indicating, and then we want to make, say, add an extra work session, and we're able to do that, right?
Yes.
Yes, we are able to do many things. It would be my preference, rather than move it, to consider moving it back, that since we're a long way from June, that we consider holding fast for now and seeing how things unfold, and a little closer to the time, we can make that determination. If this last couple of years has taught me anything, it's that anything can happen. So we may want to just be mindful, again, this board has done an amazing job being proactive and, and making sure that we are fitting in everything and taking plenty of time to discuss and come to agreement. So, I'm fine with leaving it for now, but I appreciate you pointing that out, and I think that we do need to, to keep that in mind as a, as an option as we get a little bit closer to the time. Anyone else have anything else?
I'm happy with, with Ms. Campbell's, uh, indic, uh, proposal.
Okay. Uh, Board Member Cummings?
I'm, I'm fine with changing the first one, but leaving the other one, leaving it alone.
Vice Chair King, I think I heard that you would like to leave it as it is for now? Vice Chair King, I think I heard that you would like to leave it as it is for now?
Right.
Okay, all right. Well, it sounds to me like we will be definitely canceling the meeting on the work session on February 3rd to accommodate FSBA and that for now, we'll leave it as presented on the agenda. So, Attorney Powers, do we need to vote on February 3rd and then the other items separately? Or?
Uh, yeah, we would have to have each individually treated that way because otherwise the second one's going to fail.
Right.
I don't understand the motion exactly now, so if we could reclarify so we know what we're voting on.
Can we just vote on it and then make an amendment? And would that make it easier if we just voted?
And amend the dates.
Yes, and then amended the February date?
That is an option.
That might make it easier.
Okay.
Maybe.
So, the, the motion on the floor is to amend or to approve the motion as presented and then look at amending. All those in favor approving the motion as amended, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign?
Aye.
We need this specifically.
I think, I think, no, no.
As far as I understand, this is tricky.
Well, I think we vote for our motion.
Yes.
Then we make an amendment.
And make an amendment.
We need to say the amendment and then we vote.
Right.
Okay.
So, I move that we approve.
Should we do it the other way around?
So, we already have a motion on the floor. That's why we...
The motion's on the floor, so we...
Let's hear from our attorney.
Yes, I, as, as Ms. King stated, that's the appropriate way to go about it. It'd be that we, we vote on a motion, then you state the amendment and vote on the amendment to the motion.
Okay, so, I'd like, all those in favor.
May I, may I ask, just so I, I'm clear. So, we're saying, don't change, then we're saying change after with the amendment?
Amendment would be the...
Is that what we're saying?
We, right, because we're needing an amendment, so...
Okay, adapt it without a change, then adopt it with a change, or then vote on amending it, a change. Okay, I got it.
We already have a motion on the table, so we just have to vote on it as presented and then we are going to have a separate motion to make the changes.
To amend.
Yes, okay, okay.
All right.
Now, I understand.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I get a first, a first and a second?
Didn't we have a motion and a second to start the discussion, I believe? I'm not sure who that, did we?
We did.
No, we didn't.
I don't know that we did, now that I'm thinking about it.
Okay, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Campbell?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Cummings. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we amend the calendar we just approved to cancel the February 3rd work session for FSBA days in Tallahassee with all of those items to be moved by the superintendent and the chair to coordinate those and that's my motion.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Cummings. All right, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We did it, all right. Thank you.
And I, and I won't make the motion to move the June 16th date to June 23rd based on the...
For, for right now.
Right, okay.
All right, yep, and we covered that in the first one. So, I think we are good. All righty, moving on. May I have a motion to approve the 2021 through 2026 Strategic Plan Achieve 2026?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Cummings. Seconded by Board Member Campbell. Is there any discussion? Dr. Gullett?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, a good evening again. I am very pleased to present the strategic plan for your review and consideration this evening. As you know, it's attached and you have a hard copy. This, this process began really a year and a half ago. It's been quite a process. Began when I was first appointed and, and listening to our stakeholders and then once here on the ground, having, listening to our surveying, our staff, having round tables and reviewing, of course, the feedback and the, the data with you as a board. And so, we're going to start with page three. I'm just going to highlight a couple of pages. With, with your collaboration, of course, the board set goals and the foundations for our success. If you scroll down to the bottom, if you could, I'm going to start with the bottom. The foundations for our success that we established are right here in front of you, that we believe in high expectations, we believe in trusting relationships, transparent communication, responsibility and accountability. We are going to be looking at continuous improvement and acceleration and innovation. And we all agree that this is critically important for our district to move to the top third among districts in the state of Florida. So, if we scroll back up, we're showing page three on here. Again, in those conversations, of course, you remember that we talked about what is our vision? What's that going to look like? And it was through those conversations that we established that our vision is helping every student succeed. It's that simple, that everyone in this community and on our district community is committed to making sure that every student is successful, wherever they come from, whatever their needs are. Everyone has a role in a place. I think that's very powerful. It's very simple, but very powerful. And then we reexamined our, our mission and we landed with, together with families and the community, Marion County Public Schools creates diverse and enriching pathways for all students to achieve intellectual and personal excellence, helping every student find their, their personal goals, meet those and, and thrive. So, I'm very excited about that. Again, appreciate all of your involvement from the beginning. You each are assigned a goal, but also as a board, you're involved and have been involved from the beginning with giving feedback to this plan. So, it's again, a collaborative effort that I'm very excited about. We also had a steering committee and I wanted to recognize and thank all those members. A diverse group of thinkers from our district and our school teams, really appreciate them thinking outside the box and appreciate their input, honest feedback. And so, together, we established and formulated metrics for how we'll hold, hold ourselves accountable. We established priority strategies, which is all in the plan, this, this big document here, and key activities. And so, it's really important that we focus in on our five goals. So, if we can go to page six, I'll show that on the screen. That's on your page six. So, these are our goals. This provides really our North Star for where we're going as a district. At the center of all of this, it's important to remember our students. While we have five, if you think about it in terms of a circle, the students are our core. So, first goal being student success, we're increasing student achievement, their opportunities, their access and equity too. Again, wherever students reside in our district, they have access to those choices for them to thrive. And goal two, safe and positive learning and working environment. Important for our students to learn in a safe place, but also important for our employees to be in a place that is, that is conducive to learning and working together to support our students. Goal three is talent management. How do we ensure that we're providing support to our team? We can't have students in a position of learning if we do not have staff that are capable and have access to the resources they need. That again, goes back to and extends to what we heard earlier tonight about bus transportation and custodial services and, and lunchroom, everyone part of a talented team and supporting them. We're focusing very intensely here on retention and recruitment of, of a high-quality and dedicated team. Goal four, fiscal and operational efficiency ensures that we're creating key performance indicators, known as KPIs, for our operations and making sure that throughout our operational team, that we are providing measures of success, that we're evaluating our progress and we're holding ourselves accountable, that we're good stewards of public funds. We want to make sure that we're transparent how we do that. And last but not least is goal five, our community engagement and communication. We strive to provide stellar customer service, not only to our external stakeholders, but our internally, we need to do that as well. So, we're going to strive to do that, but also involving and enhancing our wonderful partnerships that are in place already and how that extends beyond what we're doing in the classroom across the district. And so, we appreciate the partners already in place around the community. I want to make a couple of notes on this plan. I think it's really important to, for everyone to hear that we will be very flexible. This may be a document that's in writing right now. Fluid and flexibility, right? Fluidy is, fluidity is important to make sure that everyone knows that it's not a document that sits on the shelf, that we established all of this from everything I've just described as, as an indication of where we are and where we need to go and it's very strategic, but that we know that there will be changes, that as we look at our metrics and we look at what's happening and changes that happen sometimes externally to us. For example, our statewide assessment is going to change. We will change and adapt to that. So, we will continue to use this as a guide, but we will address and change as needed. I also want to share that we will provide a very comprehensive review on our plan, on our progress of our implementation and our metrics. We'll do that two times very, in a comprehensive manner, two times a year. So, we'll do that each year in February and in August. And those months were chosen because of the results of the student achievement data that comes back. So, everyone will get to hear and see where we are, what we might need to consider changing, what's working and provide a very transparent report to the public. So, again, I want to thank everyone, including the board, especially the board, for thinking outside the box and for being authentically engaged in this process. The work really just began. I mean, this is, this is ongoing. And so, providing discernment in prioritizing our strategies and what we need to do for students. But the goals are very ambitious. I know they are, but I firmly believe and I'm confident that we can meet those goals if we do those together. Hence, the name for the plan, Achieve. I'm confident that we can achieve if we work together. So, I thank you and I look forward to any feedback you want to provide tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Board? Be back?
I love the idea of somewhere, somehow, I was raised under reading, writing and arithmetic. You've just got to nail those things, you know, and, and it's just good old homespun, you know, get it done. We just had that scholar in here, Lord have mercy, 100%, you know, just getting the arithmetic part down, such genius. So, I, I applaud you for thinking ahead like this and laying out a plan. When you have a plan, you can work your plan. You've got to have that. So, I'm, I, I get very excited about things like this.
Thank you. Board Member Browning, if I could highlight goal one, what's critically important to understand in goal one is it's not about programs, it's about effective teaching and this foundational knowledge. We have focused very keenly on what we call tier-one instruction and that is making sure that all those core subjects are covered intensely for all students. And so, that's a really key part of goal one.
Very important, wonderful.
I 100% agree. Board Member Browning, you're spot on with this one. The role of a school system, as I see it, in the public schools is, is to create citizens and citizens that can, that'll be functional and, and contributing and really have a solid, solid foundation. So, I believe that we will achieve. Thank you very much for taking the lead on this. What else?
I, I would just like to say how excited I am. I know this has been a long time coming and, and I personally like that each one of us as a board member is assigned to a different pillar of this goal, of this plan. You may have already guessed that mine is goal five, community engagement and communications. But I know that each one of us is going to serve a different role on this and just how while certainly we don't delve into the operation side of things, having an outlook from a board perspective, I think is engaging and impactful. I know there, that in community engagement, they're already working on survey language and because that's part of my wheelhouse and expertise, I, I'm grateful to be able to weigh in on that. But again, all of these metrics that we have, we have to have some baseline data so we can show where we're going to move and how we're going to make that movement. So, we have to start with that initial information. And a lot of this, we have, student success, we have test scores and things, but when you're talking community engagement and communications, we don't really have baseline data just yet. So, we're, I know that the team is working on putting that together right now. We have it for Title I, but not for the entire district. So, I'm super excited and so grateful that we're getting this approved. We, we've been talking about it for so long and it's going to be done. We're moving on with it tonight.
Right. Yes, I agree too. The board has really done its part. I'm especially proud. I believe that our community members feel welcome and comfortable coming in here. I think the gentleman that spoke earlier hit the nail on the head, you know? There are so many different inputs and opinions and everyone has been so respectful and, and accommodating and really listening. And I believe that every single board member sitting here listens intently and, and thinks hard and, and carries it, you know, with us every single day. So, that's been wonderful, you know, to see that evolution. And is there any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. We already have a motion on the table. So, all those in favor of approving the 2021 through 2026 Strategic Plan Achieve 2026, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on to a great part of the night, donations. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $60,984.72. $1,000 to Bellevue High School from their business partner Bradley Blessings State Farm Insurance. Clothes, shoes, basketballs, sheet sets, core supplies and markers valued at $1,998.71 to Emerald Shores Elementary School from CC's Wish List. Shoes valued at $2,889.42 to Emerald Shores Elementary School from CC's Wish List. Clothes, shoes, sheet sets and folders valued at $1,682.45 to Pheasantin Elementary School from CC's Wish List. $3,000 to Forest High School from Daniel and Christina Schnorenberg. I hope I said that accurately. $7,916 to Fort McCoy School from Michael and Kathleen Smith. $4,050 to Fort McCoy School from Cactus Jacks II Incorporated. Clothes, shoes, basketballs and markers valued at $1,091.15 to Greenway Elementary School from CC's Wish List. $1,500 to Hillcrest Public School from Jeffrey L. Saylor, CPA, PA. Gift cards valued at $4,962.04 to Hillcrest Public School from Rack Room Shoes. Children and adult clothing, shoes, bed sheets, pencils and glue sticks valued at $15,219.34 to Marion County Public Schools from CC's Wish List. $2,000 to Marion County Public Schools Food and Nutrition Services Department from Gen Youth Incorporated. Shoes, sweatshirts and jackets valued at $4,958.11 to Oak Crest Elementary School from CC's Wish List. Shoes valued at $3,517.50 to Reddick Collier Elementary School from Enchanted Backpack. $1,200 to Stanton Weersdale Elementary School from Bailey Trail Villagers. $4,000 to Vanguard High School from Marion County Hospital District. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Cummings?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair King. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Board Member Cummings, would you give us the pleasure of the thank you tonight?
Sure. Listen, we are always appreciative of all these donations. We have a giving community. Marion County is a very giving community and we see the value, you see the value of education and making sure that our kids and our schools have the things that they need. So, we always and truly thank you from the bottom of our hearts for all of these donations. Keep them coming, keep them coming and we look forward to thanking you again. Thanks.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. All right, moving on to meeting reminders. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for November 18th, 2021 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss stop loss and enrollment update, self-funded health plan, Marion County Hospital District presentation, 2022, 2023 instructional calendar and COVID-19 updates. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for December 9th, 2021 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss COVID-19 updates. I feel like there must be more. I'm sure there will be by the time we get to that. Okay, moving on to committee reports, concerns and comments. Okay, moving on to committee reports, concerns, and comments. Ms. Martina Lopez, anything for us tonight?
Yes, Board Members, you were given an email that I forwarded to you from Jennifer Leeds regarding names for committees for the textbook adoptions. Please know that those are due by November 30th back to me so that I can forward them on to her. They will not be accepted after November 30th. So please, if you do have any names, fill out the form, send them back to me. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I do have a few celebrations, really. I'll start with the first one. Vanguard Women's Volleyball Team, if you didn't already know this, is playing the state Final Four. So we wish them the best of luck, fantastic, fantastic news there. This Saturday is our first parent partnership event. So we've been trying to get the word out, 9 to 12, and so we look forward to having folks come out at Forest High School. We're going to talk about Canvas. We'll have Canvas for families, elementary, secondary reading, second language learners, how to help support them, iReady, library media resources, a lot of resources. There are a lot of folks there that are really excited to help our families, to help the students. So look forward to seeing folks out there. And there will be door prizes, giveaways, and food Saturday.
Saturday.
Saturday, the 13th, from 9 to 12 at Forest High School. Absolutely. And I'll be happy to leave that with you if you'd like. Yes, sir. We are recognizing, this is Holocaust Education Week, 8 through the 12th, and our secondary students in particular are doing a lot of work, research, and presentations around Holocaust Education Week. So want to share that. I also want to share that it is National School Psychology Week with the theme of "Let's Get in Gear." So we're recognizing and appreciating our psychologists and all the work that they do all year long to support our students. So want to say thank you to those folks, and sometimes I know that's a very specific role they have, and we appreciate with all of our other team members the work that they do. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Many great and exciting things happening. It's great to be able to get back to more typicality.
Yes, indeed.
Good stuff. Welcome our parents back and all of our volunteers. It's great. All right, anything from Legal, sir?
Nothing from Legal. Thank you.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. Board Member Browning?
Yes. Let's see. Board Member Browning. Okay. We had a great meeting yesterday. It was yesterday, wasn't it? These days run together with the Marion County Board of County Commissioners. And it was a chance to kind of pull everything together and collaborate in the interest of efficiency. And one of the things that came up, that I was, it was on our presentation, and it was Dave Hurley, he made an excellent presentation. And by the way, he had just an addition to the family and still came out and got that job done.
Little arrow.
One of the neat things that came up, and I thought it was worth celebrating a little bit, or at least acknowledging, and that is the, one of his slides has birth rates, and this is projecting out future in terms of dollars. And I've been digesting it since then, and it's incredibly important to look as you project out your costs. And this is cost for facilities with children, birth rates being projected as flat. And there is revenue associated with students, but still, I'm just looking at it from a, the number of students and the facilities we'll need, and the increased number of permits, building permits. So we've got an ad valorem buildup, ad valorem tax buildup, and we have a flat expense zone if, in fact, we really pay attention, and they offered, and that is the idea of having a collaborative effort to move things around and to really manage where we put assets, where the student populations are, to get the biggest bang for our buck in terms of facility. So I thought that was really encouraging. Flat lines and increased revenue lines say, wow, we're going to be able to make things happen. And how that works out in terms of capital expenditures and what have you, we'll have to work through those. But it's kind of nice to see that taking place. Second item that I have is Ocala Domestic Violence. I've been associated with these folks for a number of years, and Dr. Judy Wilson is now going to be involved heavily with our superintendent on a couple of things that have come to fore, and that is, in the past year or two, things have, there's a kink in the hose in terms of tokens for transportation, and this is a city issue, and I did talk with the mayor about it. But I'd like to get that kink out of there so that flows properly, so that transportation works. And then tutoring. For some reason, a couple of years ago, it got a kink in that hose, and we stopped supplying tutors to families in this environment. So I'd like to see a report come, or, you know, some real progress, and that's where we kind of make emergency action there. Next item, I have no report back yet on guidance on the Sunshine Law. Hopefully, that's coming. Stanton Weersdale, this item has got a lot to report. I think we had personnel out there, our safety people, they found issues, and especially in the light of recent situations with children crossing roads and having problems. And signs, signs coming out in every location within that walk-in zone, signs are equal, signs are the same. So a person driving knows that there's a student likely possibility, foreseeable future of a student popping out. And this is something, I've asked for emergency cones being placed, and I think they're in right now, it's been reported, I haven't seen it with my own eyes, but it's reported that they're in. Normal signs, normal cross, crossing, all of that at the mouth of that school in those first two roads, which are really just long driveways. So that's my soapbox on that little item. Next, Mr. Schmidt, I was really taken, and I like that. I hope we have a workshop, or if we, how do we pull that in if something pops in on this vaccination idea? Because I know nationally, there's a lot of political movement, and I just don't want us to get caught up into that where we haven't had a chance to really discuss, and that we never get caught putting anything into anybody's body that we, you know, that we haven't absolutely really thought through. And finally, the item of consent agendas. Now, this is a good example, like tonight's consent agenda, I had several items, but I didn't pull them, and I wanted to talk about it during discussion on them. But even that got waylaid a little bit because Ms. Allison had that, had her item pulled. But I would like to see some real, that was, we've had beautiful discussion, and we have to have discussion for everybody in the community to know, and even I need to know what Eric has to say. I just need to know it. And with the Sunshine Law, and with blocks and briefings, and with, you know, just a lot of obstacles, we don't get to talk that much about these things, and I think it's critical. I don't care if we have 15 workshops, you know, it would work for me as long as we're being stewards in this. Set a criteria for amounts. Things should not, that's a handy little Robert's Rule thing, a consent agenda, but to have major things go rolling through there in a group effort without discussion, to me, is a bit of a travesty in terms of the value of the items. I have, this is one I was going to bring up tonight. I don't know if everybody can see this, but this was in one of the items. As a businessman, stewardship, and that's part of our plan, is to be great stewards. Item after item after business after business, look at it, two pages of businesses that we're continuing to send out bid requests, for example. I would like to get in, you know, I'm a businessman, I know how to run a railroad. I would get into the middle of that, and if we have $700 million, 750 or whatever it is, I have a goal, an automatic goal of 10% that I can, you know, call me Houdini, I can, through stewardship, I can pull that off on almost anything. It's almost like sales tax in some places. So I would like to see that just get, things that are automatic renewals and go into this consent, or things that are, they've been going along. I mean, this is, this is like somebody's doing an awful lot of work, we're paying an awful lot of postage, we're talking to the wrong people. If they, these are all people that have not responded in previous years, and we're doing multi-year renewals, just, it's not good business. So that's the end of my particular rant for this evening. And now, unless somebody wants to name me in something like last week, and then I would like, Chair, I would like to be able to respond. Thank you. Since I go first. So I would like to be able to respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Browning. Board Member Campbell?
Sure. So I have a couple of things. First of all, on all of the donations that we approved this evening, very, very grateful for all of the things that our community does for us. However, I am looking forward to the discussion that we can have on policy that requires us to approve those donations. Because I know, we can't talk about this, but we're going to be talking about it in Neola Policy Review, but right now, our policy says that we have to actually approve them before those dollars can get to the places they need to go. And I don't want Marion County Public Schools to be known as the hardest place to give money to. And I've heard that banter in the community. And so while I definitely appreciate the fact that we need to continue to acknowledge those gifts as we do, but for our approval, frankly, I think that there's a lot of unnecessary red tape, and that's a policy we'll be able to talk through when we get to Neola. I'm just making that point tonight, just because when we're approving $1,000 here and $1,000 there, that, in my opinion, that needs to get straight to the location that it needs to go. We need to set a different threshold now that we have an appointed superintendent. A few other things. Dr. Gullett already stole the thunder on the Vanguard lady on the volleyball team heading to the Final Four, so I'll mention that we have four football teams heading into playoffs. We have four football teams heading into playoffs this weekend also. And just to mention a few other sports, I know our middle school volleyball teams are playing even this evening, because I missed my own son's game, but their slow pitch softball seasons have ended and fast pitch softball seasons have started. Basketball teams and wrestling teams are practicing and warming up for their seasons. And there are plenty of others I didn't mention, those just happen to be the ones that were top of mind. So Scholar Athletes and Athletics in Marion County, alive and well, and we're very excited about all of the advancement that they are making and moving headway. I also wanted to mention how much I appreciate the new artwork that we have displayed in the boardroom, and people can't see it necessarily, but every year, we get new artwork, and we have some beautiful photography this time around, and there's different artwork displayed all throughout the district offices. And for those who never are able to come in and see it, we have some amazing student artists as well. So while I'm talking Scholar Athletes, I want to talk about our student artists too. And we get to enjoy it while we're sitting here, but others don't necessarily get to see it unless they went to FFO and got to see the wonderful artwork that they had displayed there. But I'm just grateful for the folks who always change this out for us, and allow us to see wonderful artwork of our students. I also wanted to say I'm grateful for the county commission for welcoming us to the intergovernmental meeting yesterday. I do feel that there were lots of good things that came out of that meeting, and I believe that potentially we could try to get on a schedule of having one of those once a year. Obviously, it will be at their invitation, but hopefully, that will be something that we can move on. School Choice Window, I wanted to make note of that. I know I've been speaking with Mr. Ayers today. School Choice Window does open next week, and it will be open until January 31st. So that actually will be magnet programs and choice middle and high school programs. So if there are any families out there that are wanting information on that, all of that comes out next week. And I know there will be a lot of ample communication about that with the window opening next week and going through January 31st. Hopefully, anyone interested can receive all the information they need to make wise decisions and to apply accordingly. Also grateful to Mr. Hurley and Mr. Powers, who are working with Supervisor Elections Wesley Wilcox about our board member residence areas. I believe we've all seen emails about that and the issue that we brought up during the work session last week, and it does appear that we do have some adjustments that need to be made. And so my hope is, and I'm grateful that we can get those made before December 31st deadline. So thank you, Mr. Powers and Mr. Hurley. Again, he's been mentioned a lot tonight, working with Supervisor Elections Wesley Wilcox on that. I know Ms. King mentioned the other day that she had completed her ethics training, so I completed mine last evening. However, I don't have my handy dandy little certificate, because the person who I was supposed to send and get that information from is on vacation for 10 days. So I will have that, but I did. And I wanted to mention that I believe some of the Sunshine questions that have been brought up in the past are a part of that four-hour ethics training. So perhaps going through that, and whenever, we all have to do it, it has to be done by December 31st. But I remember, I think there might have been one or two scenarios, one or two discussions that may answer additional questions potentially that might have come up on that. And the last thing I'd like to mention, in wearing my Community Engagement and Communications pillar hat, if you haven't already, anyone in the community watching this, if you haven't already liked and followed our Marion County Public Schools Facebook page, @MarionCountyK12, please do so. That will be a one-way communication channel, so a lot of these things that we're talking about tonight will actually be put out on Facebook as well, on @MarionCountyK12. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Board Member Campbell. Board Member Cummings?
Good evening, everyone. Just a few things. We heard this afternoon, this evening, from some community members concerning two issues. One being the timeliness of buses and being on time and getting our kids to school on time, and making sure that they are getting all of the academic instruction that they're entitled to get and that they need to get. I can assure you that as a board, we are constantly working to try to rectify the situation. It has not been moving as fast as we would like to get it done, but as a district, we are addressing those issues. And hopefully, I think we had a few drivers that were on boarded a couple of days ago last week, I think. Am I right, Superintendent? A few were on boarded last week, so that's going to start alleviating some of it. But we need more, and this is my appeal to the community. If you have, if there are folk out there in the community that want to drive a bus, that can drive a bus, that have those skills, that skill set, please reach out to us. There's, at every school, we have signs at almost every school saying that we are hiring for bus drivers, and we're looking for ways to get these kids to school, because we understand that it's important that every minute that they can get, they can be in front of the teacher. That's vital. So we don't take that lightly, and please don't think that it's off our radar, that is on our radar. I'm sure every one of us is probably getting emails daily concerning the timeliness of buses being there. So I just wanted to let the community know that if there's someone out there, that you can drive a bus, and you can get through the clearances and stuff, please, please reach out to our Transportation Department, and we'll try to get you through that process, because we want to get these kids to school on time. And then I heard, we heard from a community member that also mentioned about COVID vaccinations and removing parental consent. This is me. I don't, since I've been on the board, I haven't heard of us as a board restricting or taking away parents' parental rights for kids. We didn't do it with the group that was able to take the shots from 12 to 18, and I don't anticipate that ever happening with this board. So I don't think that's going to be an issue. I don't foresee that ever being an issue with us removing rights from parents and mandating a kid to get a shot, and they come home and they've gotten a shot and the parents didn't know. I just can't see that. One of the things that has been mandated through the state is that parental consent is necessary. I speak with the Health Department on a daily basis. Matter of fact, I just got a text from them, because they heard that comment, and one of the requirements for the Health Department is that a parent has to be there if a kid gets their shot. So that will not be an issue for Marion County Public Schools. Then, moving on to the Strategic Plan. I held my comments when we were talking about Achieve 2026 Strategic Plan, because I am truly delighted to see where we've come with this Strategic Plan from our superintendent. When she came on, she knew that some of the priorities that we had... When she came on, she knew that some of the priorities that we had as a board was to get the strategic plan in place to correct those things that were wrong in the strategic plan to, to make sure that the strategic plan did not fit just certain kids, but all kids, and it was effective for all kids. And, and I want to, one of the things when I, when I, when I was running originally, I saw the strategic plan and I saw the priorities of how we had listed our goals. And when I looked through that list, I didn't like where I saw students at on that, that ranking, and kids were not top priority. This board has made sure that the number one goal for these students is to students. We're in the business of dealing with students and they have to be first. Everything that we do has to be centered around what's going to be best for the kids. So I wanted to tell her thank you and the team for making sure that, that student success is the top priority. On page six, you'll see it's goal number one. And then the other thing, and I'm, I'm, I know I'm a pastor, I'm a preacher, so I, I look at words. Words mean a lot to me. And when I look at the words that I kept seeing jumping out, when you, when you, when you're reading scripture and you see certain words that jump out in scripture and it jumps out more than one time, it's called the biblical principle of second mention. Well, I read everything and I read every word. So I was reading this and there was a word that kept jumping out to me in this strategic plan. Y'all will read it too, I'm sure you'll see it on page six, the word "all." It jumps out more than one time. So this tells me that this strategic plan is not just for certain select groups of students, it's for all. This strategic plan is not just for certain select groups of employees, it's for all. And even when you get into page eight of this strategic plan, where it talks about the priorities of our student success, it goes a little bit further, because it says to engage all. So again, the goal of our district is to make sure that all students succeed, and we're going to get that done. I believe we have the staff that's able to get that done. I believe that we have the people, right people in the right places that will get that done. And even to make sure that all the students get to school on time as well. So we're going to make sure that happens. So I promise you that, that's, that's, that's the goals of this board. And then, just to move a little bit further, we do want to, the second goal on that was safety. We know that, we know what happened last week with the young man, and then there was also, I think, the next day, someone else got hit by a car, but they, they've survived. We have to understand that safety has to be a, a top, one of the top priorities as well. And, and that safety goes beyond just our bus drivers, just the students paying attention. We need the community to pay attention to their surroundings, to pay attention when they're in the areas of schools, to pay attention when they're driving through school zones. Because kids are going to be kids, kids play, kids run out in the streets, kids, I did it, I, I thank God I didn't get hit, but it happens. So we have to, as, as a community, be more conscious of where we are when we're in the midst of these kids. So please, I'm pleading with the community to please be conscious of your surroundings and understanding that when kids are in the area, anything is liable to happen, ball roll out, anything is liable to happen. So please be conscious of that, because we don't, we don't want to have anything else happening like that, that tragedy that happened last week. We want to make sure that our kids get through the school year. And then, closing on my last comment, is on next week at five thirty on the sixteenth. Howard Academy, the Black History Museum is going to have another reopening. I want to encourage everyone to please go out and join in this event. You would be surprised, the artifacts, actual artifacts that are there, that our county is rich in. We have some great things, I know some of the stuff had to be moved and, and boxed up and archived because of space. However, we have some, some history here, and I want to encourage everyone to please take the opportunity, it's from five thirty to seven o'clock next Tuesday, the sixteenth, and that's at the Howard Academy Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. Ms. Martinez Lopez, we may want to put on the website advertise that, because there may very well be more than one board member there for the Howard Academy. Thank you. All right, Vice Chair King.
Yes, well, it was hit on a couple of times tonight about us meeting with the county commission yesterday, which I found to be pretty, very good conversation for the two, for us to be working together. And you touched on transportation a little bit. And one of the highlights that I took from yesterday is, you know, I think Michelle Stone is working on a, she's chairing a transportation initiative. And, you know, there was some discussion about us working, you know, collaboratively also with, you know, buses and, and, and maybe we could work together on getting a good message out. And that was one of my highlights. And over, it was an overall great meeting, but transportation really stuck out with me yesterday. Also, I, as you guys know, I am on the Rookie Teacher of the Year Committee, and now we have our finalists. So I'll be visiting some schools in the next couple of weeks, and I look forward to that, because that's always kind of fun, just to see what's going on out there. Also, Dr. Gullett, you mentioned the Holocaust, that they're going to do that. And I'm, I'm glad to hear that our students are learning about that and studying in it. My husband and I, we have taken students on tours overseas. And probably one of our most memorable trips is when we visited Daqal. And to this day, when I can think about how I felt when I was there, it's just haunting. And it is something that no one should ever forget. So I'm appreciative that you do that. And that is all I have this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair King.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. King, you reminded me, I did also want to say something about the golden apple. I'm on the teacher's side of it, so I will too be going to some schools. So congratulations to all of those that have made it thus far, and thank you for, Ms. King, for that reminder.
Thank you. Yes, Dave Hurley, his name has come up multiple times tonight, but there's a reason for that. He just worked so hard to get that intergovernmental communication going and, and get it scheduled, working with Dave and Monir from the county commission and the rest of the staff. The agenda that was presented yesterday went through four iterations before it was finalized. And so there was a ton of thought that, that went into it, and hard work pays off. And again, Mr. Hurley, if you're listening in, congratulations, being a dad once again. I, I hope your wife and little Errol are doing really well, I think they're, they're home now. In fact, he left the meeting to, I believe, to bring his wife home, so, and new baby, so. That's dedication, I will tell you that. And everything really went off without a hitch. So it was a great start off to hopefully a future of meeting more often. I, I think that when the can gets kicked on the road, then you just have that much more to talk about. And I'm sitting here looking at our policy notebook down on my left, and you probably can't see it on the camera. So I guess I'll just show it to you, because it's a pretty impressive gigantic.
Young lady, do not hurt yourself.
Thank you, good thing I'm a horse girl. This is our, our policies that we will be reviewing over the next weeks. And it's been many years since that has happened. And it's another example of how proactive this board really works to be. When, when we notice things, we, we bring them up. And, and I think that part of the best things, some of the best things about this board is that, that we all have the interest of helping every student succeed at the core of our hearts. But we focus on different things, you know, and then we come together to move everything forward. You know, we all have our passions, we all have our interests, and they all tie in to helping every student succeed. And, and I love that vision statement, because I'll be able to remember it. Helping every student succeed. You know, some of these vision statements are twelve sentences long. And if I walked up to, to an employee and said, what is our vision statement? They'd be like a deer caught in the headlights. And it, and it reminds me of, of the big three. You know, do what's right, do your best, treat others the way you want to be treated. Couldn't be more straightforward than that. And, and that has stuck with me through these years. So helping every student succeed, I, I think is a wonderful vision. And, and I know that, that we're going to get closer and closer to achieving that for each and every child. All does mean all. Moving on to bus driver appreciation, I had the, the pleasure of getting down to Liberty Middle School last week and got a chance to get there early and, and visit with, with the principal. And she is just amazing, comes from a family of educators. And I think three generations she was sharing with me. So that's special in and of itself. And she even has, I think it's her grandmother's principal's bell on her shelf in her office. And I guess when someone becomes a new principal, Dr. Gullett, they get a bell?
Correct. The, the new, the bells are going to be distributed to the new principals, but we're going to keep that a surprise and not tell them when.
Head out the bag.
I've been trying to, yes.
Good recovery, good recovery, Dr. Gullett, good recovery.
Bell, whip out.
Sure, they, it's probably already been leaked.
Well, it's, it's easy to just be excited of all the good things that are happening in, in our school system. And that warm family atmosphere is something that I continue to hear about over and over. And that's what's been the most missed, you know, during the shutdown and during the times that we had to be so separated. Our, our, our staff is, is yearning, you know, to get back to that feeling. And with that in mind, I was on the Health Department call yesterday. And when we started school, we were at, in the community, a thirty percent positivity rate. It was really traumatic, because after a great summer, very low COVID numbers, we really thought we were past that. And then to have that acceleration right before the start of school just was so difficult. But, you know, we, we buckled down, battle tested, not battle weary, and did what we needed to do. And thankfully, we do to everyone's, you know, hard work and, and just the way the Delta virus has gone, you know, big spike and then down quickly. We are at a three point three percent positivity rate as of last week. And so the trend continues to go down, and so it's an acknowledgement. But also, I would say that it's time to get the band back together and let's get the board back upon the dais and make it easier for our tech folks. I, I think that that will make life much easier for them to have us all where we've typically been. I'd, I'd like to propose that we, you know, think about that. We've had several weeks now of, of really good success. And it is important for our board to reflect, you know, what is happening in our schools. There is still the, the need and the mindfulness as far as the social distancing is concerned. The last thing we want to do is, is go backwards. We're moving into a time in Florida where people are going outside and up north, people are having to be inside. So I continue to remain very optimistic that our numbers are going to remain low. So I'd, I'd like for the board to think about that. And you don't have to answer me, you know, right now, we have a reorganization meeting coming up anyway. And we can decide at, at that time how we want to move forward. But any opportunity we have to celebrate and bring things back to more typicality is, is a good idea, in, in my opinion.
I'm in favor of that.
As am I.
Okay, well, that's great to hear. So, and like I said, we can come to a definite decision at another time. I just wanted to bring it forward tonight and give everybody, each board member, a chance to, to think and re, and reflect on it. Getting back to Liberty, it was really wonderful to be with the principal and then also to go over to the bus compound. Again, speaking of bus driver and, and bus aides and mechanics and everyone involved with transportation, we've been working really hard to not only help solve our transportation issues, but also to lift them up along the way. And our community has been incredibly supportive, including lunches being donated by Pasta Fair. Thank you again, Travis and Kathy Thorpe, incredibly generous, what you're doing. It was a chance, it's been to several of them already, and this one at Liberty didn't disappoint. It was a chance for wonderful fellowship. The bus drivers and aides were very straightforward about what they felt was going wrong and, and what needs improvement, areas for growth. And something they said that made me feel so good, and I wanted to share it with the rest of the board and, and everyone that's listening, it, it was shared with me that the, that transportation is really starting to see the difference. You know, they're, they're starting to feel it. And it's been, it's going to continue to be a very heavy lift. You know, we know that this is going on all across our country. I worked for Burger King in, in high school, and the burgers have gotten a lot smaller and the prices have gotten higher. And, and you can do that in the private sector. In the public sector, you know, we get the money that each of us as taxpayers, you know, pay in and from our federal sources. But it, it is a finite amount of money, and guess what? We have to have a balanced budget, we don't do deficit spending. So my point is, is that when the going gets tough for us, we can't just raise our place, prices and make our burgers smaller and say, hey, kids that have unique needs, we're not going to serve you anymore, because it's costing us too much money. So I think that is important to keep in mind, that the, the public sector and the private sector are very different in, in that way. That being said, it continues to be our commitment on the fiscal side to always be forward-thinking, always be innovative, always looking for ways to allocate resources so that we get the most bang for our buck. And there are multiple ways to do that, there's multiple talents on this board, there's multiple talents of, of staff, there's multiple talents of ideas. You just have to unleash it, and then I think get out of the way and let it happen. So I, I'm very, very encouraged by all of the trials and tribulations that we've gone through and how we've overcome them. We have not closed one school, we got two schools out of external operation during a pandemic, which is, I have it written down, and I did not bring that note, but I will share that next time, how much it's saving the taxpayers for that to happen. And those are the kinds of successes that we really need to keep focusing on as a district, as we continue to lift each other up, as we continue to honor our family culture, and as we continue to deliver as a school board what we said we were going to do. And I'm confident that we'll continue to do that. So those are my comments for tonight, and I really appreciate everybody's continued commitment to helping every student succeed. We're moving and we're grooving. Okay. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternate placement list for students through October twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Therefore, may I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD twenty-two dash zero eighteen, JD twenty-two, JD twenty-two dash twenty, JD twenty-two dash zero two one, JD twenty-two dash zero two two, JD twenty-two dash zero two three E, JD twenty-two dash zero two four, JD twenty-two dash zero two five, JD twenty-two dash zero two six, JD twenty-two dash zero zero two seven, JD twenty-two dash zero two eight, JD twenty-two dash zero two nine, JD twenty-two dash zero three zero, JD twenty-two dash zero three two, JD twenty-two dash zero three three, JD twenty-two dash zero three four, JD twenty-two dash zero three five, JD twenty-two dash zero three six, JD twenty-two dash zero three seven, and JD twenty-two dash zero three eight with educational services through the remainder of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair King.
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Is there any discussion?
Yes, is there, is there a, a reason why this is so, the numbers are so large that you're aware of, or any board members aware of?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
We have nineteen, nineteen expulsions tonight, and it saddens me and hurts all of our hearts, I know that. You heard us all laboring on even making a motion, a second on this. A significant majority of these are because they were multiple individuals involved in multiple different infractions. And our policies are very stringent on what to do and not to do. And it, it saddens me and saddens all of us, I know that it does, that, that we have this. And when students make poor choices, we have to uphold our policies and ensure. And when students make poor choices, we have to uphold our policies and ensure that discipline occurs whenever those poor choices are acted upon. So please, students, make wise choices. Make wise choices. That's all I want to say.
This is just too many. I have to, I have to say it. It's too many expulsions. I, I, I believe in discipline. I believe in holding kids accountable and, and consequences. Ms. Campbell mentioned about those policies. We have to make sure that those policies, the code of conduct, those things are equitable and that they are not, um, dispensed haphazardly, but it's the same across the board because this is entirely too many expulsions for one night. Um, I don't condone any bad behavior by any student, and I believe in supporting our staff. But we need help from the parents first with this situation. And then we as a district need to make sure, again, we, our strategic plan achieved 2026 as all. So we have to make sure that all these kids are able to, to succeed and we got to figure out a way, so.
Thank you. It's, having come from the, the realm of, uh, helping every student succeed and, and especially at-risk kids, it's always the, the hardest part of, of my night to even see one, um, because of, of, of the path that a student can end up taking as, as a result, um, of their choices. One of the things that, and this was a shocker, um, to me, because we've had a, a good run of not a lot of, um, major expulsion-related issues. And so with every number, that represents a student, you know, and, and, and their future. Something that helps me sleep a little better at night is knowing, um, and hopefully this will help you, Board Member Browning as well, is that if a student does what they're required to do, then they have the opportunity, um, to come before us for early reentry. And it's a hearing and the, they come in front of the school board off of television and share what they've learned from, um, the consequences of their choices. And many times, um, those students are then, uh, able to come back into our school system sooner. And so that is something that is important. I'm not sure that every single district does that, but, or if they do, I don't know how successful, uh, how many kids are approved. But I'd like to commend our staff for, I can only think of one, maybe two, since I've been on the board, that we did not approve because the students really did. You know, we don't want this to be a, a life sentence, um, for kids. As you said, Board Member Cummings, you know, kids are kids. But in this day and age, you know, students have way too much access to way too many things that they should never even know exist, in my opinion, but, um, at least not until they're way, way older and, and we're not seeing that. So I, I appreciate every board member that encourages parents, um, to partner with us because every single student matters. And every time something like this happens, it's, it feels awful, you know, to, to me and, um, sure to the rest of us.
Especially when we have seniors.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, uh, it, it seems like there might be something going on here that's, that's not 100% uh, uh, in, in terms of the system. Like how, how in the world is this happening? I, I would be glad to devote time to this, uh, uh, to look into it so that if we, if we have something this big, that we have like an automatic, highly encouraged way to get back in the system. Like, whoa, timeout here. And because we've, we certainly, as the state have, as the government, we have plenty of power. Uh, but the individual, what I'm looking for, when I was in school, there were only a couple of, couple of people, you know, that there were real problems to the other kids and, and, and maybe to themselves, uh, but never something like this. I, I, I have, I'm, I'm thinking, whoa, could we have any assurance maybe from the superintendent that we have, that it's in place, that we can, uh, bring these, bring these, uh, students back into the program ASAP if in fact it, it's appropriate and it seems.
Can I speak up?
Right?
Okay. So what you saw tonight is not a norm. Did you see the offenses that the students made on your? There's a thing that'll show you what happened, why the students have been placed where they are. So I'm not sure if you've seen that. So it's important that you understand the offenses that have been taking place in these schools before we, uh, allow any student back into our system. So I'm going to ask that maybe you just, um, get with Elena or someone and, and show, have them show you what the offenses are so you have a better understanding before we are having a workshop to allow these students that have made some pretty, very, very serious offenses back into our classrooms. Because as was stated earlier, every student deserves an education, every student, all. And, you know, we might have a few that made bad decisions, but that was their choice and they need a consequence. We have students that do right every day that deserve an education too. And I'm just going to leave it at that. So I'm not comfortable having a workshop to allow these students into this school system quicker. And I would encourage you to take a peek and understand what is happening in these schools, that this board tonight made these decisions. And I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you for that advisement.
Thank you, Vice Chair King. Um, we have, um, Chad Frazier here and he's our area superintendent, um, in charge of secondary. And I see you have your notebook with you. So if you would be willing to, um, without violating any confidentiality, if you could just give some examples of things that would result in something like this. And, and this is because he came in.
Madam Chair.
And you had asked a question. So we'll go ahead and hear from him.
Yes.
And then if you have any further questions, uh, we'll take it from there.
I would like to address Ms. Kelly.
We're going to go ahead and hear what he has to say first.
We are, huh? Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. Board Chair Throer, Vice King, Vice Chair, Chair King. Um, all of our expulsions are Level 4 offenses according to our student code of conduct, which is board-approved and, uh, looked at and revised throughout the course of the school year and the end of the school year as well. And so, um, those are some pretty significant offenses in regards to what is happening. And so if there are ever specific questions that I can answer prior to a board workshop, I'd be more than happy to do that or a board meeting and talk you through exactly what we've seen and how we responded based upon each individual student infraction.
And I appreciate, may I?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Uh, and, and my concern is that not the specific, uh, student and not the specific, uh, offense. My concern is the enormity of this. That's my concern. And in any organization, in any structure, uh, it can always be improved. Everybody does the very best they can. I'm sure you're doing the very best you can, but you want to see positive outcomes. I'm not talking about a workshop to bring students back. I'm talking about a workshop to look at this system where we could grind this out, uh, and perhaps advance for the cause, uh, an improvement to the system, uh, because no system is perfect. So that's, that's my, that's my, my concern. And, and to me, this is incredibly troubling in magnitude. And that is not meant to be criticism. It's in magnitude. Uh, wow, wow.
Madam Chair, um, and in looking at it, I'm, I'm like Ms. King, I looked at the offenses and that's what's really, really troubling to me, that these are Level 4 offenses. And I, I go a little bit further. My, my background from law enforcement looks at what's causing these, these types of offenses. I look at that and, and the number of them that are showing up. Again, they need, there, there has to be consequences. But I also look at, um, uh, for, for instance, the number of fights that we've had on buses. Are we, are we contributing to any of that because they're sitting on the side of the road waiting so long or they're waiting at a school for, I got kids at school that's waiting at a school to five and six o'clock to get picked up. Are we causing any frustration that causes some of those things? These are valid questions that when we're looking at these situations, we look at the totality of it and make sure, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement. They have to be held accountable. They have to be held accountable. Parents have to make sure these kids are held accountable. But as a district, we just need to make sure this is a whole, this is a lot. And these are, and the, the stuff that they did in here are, are serious. I'm, I'm, I will vote that they be expelled because of what they're doing, because they are jeopardizing other kids. But let's look at, try to figure out, not us, but look at some of the causal, causal factors that's behind some of this.
Exactly.
This, this going on.
Thank you, uh, Board Member Cummings. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Frazier, for being available to, to jump right up and share that these are Level 4 offenses. I haven't seen this many ever. Um, I, I do know that getting to the root causes of why anyone, you know, behaves the way they do is critical. Um, it's not optimal when you have overstuffed buses. It's not optimal when you have, you know, long wait times. And our kids need support. I think it's a, a reflection of the, the stressors, um, that, that everyone has, has felt through this. And then it does become magnified. That being said, um, the best, the best support we can give to our kids is to help them understand not only are there consequences for their actions, but there's also supportive people around to help them learn to cope with their stressors more effectively so that they don't make a choice like that in the future. And I would like to take my hat off to Silver River Marine Institute and also New Leaf Center. Because when students are expelled with educational services, um, they, there's a couple of options and then also they can choose to, um, do, uh, online school, uh, Florida Virtual or Marion Virtual, I guess. Um, but I, it's my hope and prayer that, that students will go and get the extra support that these schools offer and with the support of their parents, uh, learn to cope. Because, you know, life is hard. And, and the last thing we want to do is set up a student for further failure down the way. And again, that's why I'm so glad when we have those early reentry opportunities because it can, it can bring a student back as much as a semester early. And it really then makes them feel like, I conquered this, I did this, I now have the, the skillset and the tools I need to be able to handle, um, difficult and triggering situations better. So this is an anomaly, um, and we do need to keep that in mind. But I think it also is reflective, a little bit of what's going on in society today. There's a lot of screaming going on, there's a lot of arguing going on, there's a lot of fighting going on. And, you know, we have to look at that as adults and, and how do we work through our, our disagreements and, and our disappointments? Yes, sir.
Let me, one more final short statement. And please, I want those that hear us, hear these, this conversation to know that I've been on the board three years now, I cannot think of maybe, maybe once that we've expelled a student that did not get educational services. So when we expel, we do expel where they have another opportunity to continue their education. So I don't want the community to think that we just kick kids out with nothing to hold on to, so.
Yeah.
The superintendent has, we'd like to hear it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I'd just like to add, appreciate the opportunity to add to the discussion, uh, a few, uh, notes that may be helpful. Uh, and I know that most of you are aware of this, that we have a process in place and my leadership team, Mr. Frazier brings items. Every week we review each of these cases. We talk about the patterns, we talk about what's happening to try to get to the bottom of that. Um, one pro, what, um, action item that's already come from that is I asked Mr. McFadden to put together a task force with different stakeholders to start to look at where we're seeing some of these issues. And so we have a number of different folks involved in that, um, because it's not just one isolated incident and we need to address root issues. So that's a place, um, that we discuss that. We have some pretty raw conversation around it. We look at the data, um, to try to prevent this from occurring. The other item I wanted to add to the discussion is on page nine of your strategic plan. We have put numbers to this to say, not that we're going to lighten up on the consequences, but that we're talking about this being a real issue in our community. And how can we address alternative placements and expulsions? Uh, again, to reinforce what has already been shared by you as board members, we're providing a safe environment for all, for all students. It's so important. Um, thank you, um, Board Member Cummings for bringing that forward. That is, that, I have to say that again out loud, all students. Um, but we are putting metrics to this, we're putting strategies to this to ensure that we're trying to make sure that all of these students have access to the education they so richly deserve. So, um, and to reiterate what's been shared, we have reentry, um, processes in place. But I just wanted to provide assurance that we have a number of things operationally that we're doing to address this. And we take this very seriously, um, to support that environment, but also to make sure that we're, um, addressing these students' needs as well. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Um, again, appreciate it. And, um, uh, Board Member Browning, are you feeling more comfortable now?
Yeah, uh, Ms. uh.
Yes, I see her.
Okay, okay. Uh, well, especially, yeah, the, uh, the, uh, uh, the conversation, the discussion is incredible. Uh, I would like to, to feel, uh, some reassurance that, that we're, that this is a real anomaly and that we are going to, um, we're going to see, meet some of these goals where we're, we see less. Uh, because we've got, like our psychologists, we've got this, we've got a great superintendent, we've got staff. I would like to redouble that effort and not be, I used to be a, a police commissioner. We've got to, you got to bear down, you got to get the job done, you've got to have public safety. And a student, it's our responsibility to make everyone in their field, all feel safe and where they can actually learn. However, with that said, this discussion I think is critically important because every organization must continually, uh, question their programs. If there was a gap, I want to know about it and I'm, I'm right there with the rest of you. We get in there and we, we do what we can to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Board Member Kim?
I, I just wanted to add, I, I do believe in, in talking with staff about some of these, that some of them were a timing issue, uh, that, that's why we, we have a couple that actually were offenses in September that have hit our board packet this time. And so that, I had a lot of questions about that, but it's because of timing and how far out we have to put them in board docs and, and all of, all of the things. And, you know, if this had come in a day sooner, then it would have actually been in the October, uh, board packet and those sorts of things. But the other thing that I wanted to, um, mention in, in speaking with Dr. Gullett about this too, I'm grateful that staff is going to continue to look at our processes because as she and I were speaking, we actually have a couple of honors students that are in this that are now being expelled that won't have access to honors classes. So while we have wonderful partnerships with New Leaf and Sermi, the students who are on a pathway with accelerated learning, who have made these poor decisions, only have that option to do in virtual school on their own rather than having a teacher in front of them teaching. And so that, that hurts my heart because that's where we do have that discrepancy in the all. And so I know that we're going to continue to massage that and look in how we can adjust that or provide those additional supports for those students that have accelerated learning pathways that are not going to have access to them in the same way because of these poor choices.
Yes, yes. And when those come through, those are especially problematic. And I know that that's something that we've got a good lens on, including our, our gifted students, because gifted students can have the tendency to question just about everything. And, um, you know, we, we have to be, um, prepared. Um, is there any more discussion?
Yes, I, I have one more thing to say. As I, I agree, I think we should look into it and stuff, but I want us to be very careful that, um, in the past, when things like this happen, people learn real quick how to manipulate numbers and things. And I want us to be careful that we do not encourage, um, just because what looks good on paper, that we encourage manipulation. looks good on paper, that we encourage manipulation, so students are not having consequences, whether you're an A student on honor roll, or you're F or whatever you are, if you do something awful, there's a consequence. And I, as a board member, will never come off that, that if you do something wrong, there will be a consequence. And it doesn't matter who you are, you will have a consequence, and I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair King. I guess we need to go ahead and vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion passes unanimously. It's been a tough conversation tonight, and, you know, there's always a backstory. And when you see these numbers coming through, and thank you, Board Member Campbell, for mentioning that some of them were from as far back as September, because they got brought through in a batch. And it makes you think, gosh, was there a riot, or, you know, what happened, where all of these kids, you know, from the same altercation? And that's absolutely not the case between, behind every single one of these numbers is an individual student with an individual issue. So it's important that the community knows that and understands that there's, apparently there have been a little bit of a backlog, and sometimes that happens with investigations and all kinds of things. So kind of a perfect storm, as far as that goes, and hate to end it like that, I would just personally like to say that each and every student that is going to come back to us, and they'll be ready to be even better learners than they were before, and I, we're committed to that, so. All right, there being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
A move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings, seconded by Vice Chair King. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned at 7:22 PM. Thank you very much.